Testing one, two, one, two, three, four, one, two, 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 one, two, one. Testing one, two, one, two, three, four, one, two, 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 one, two, one. Okay, okay. There's a little bit of a delay there, gentlemen, on the audio. A little bit of a delay there, gentlemen, on the audio.
Did it come in at three?
Three. Oh, what do you mean? Oh. Call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, June 23rd, the time is 6:03 PM. Welcome to City Council's special meeting and pizza party. And. Fenton? Counselor Perez and Click Bruce are here remotely. Can you hear us, councilors? You are on mute, Counsel Perez.
There you are.
Counselor Perez. Counselor Perez, can you hear us?
Okay.
Okay, 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 okay.
I really hope that this is going to work tonight, but we're not going to, we're not going to wait another forty-five minutes to see if it does. So focus, is there a way that we can get audio for Counsel Perez and Counsel Click Bruce? All right, I, I, there's obviously an echo, there's all sorts of audio issues. I can hear Counselor Click Bruce and Perez through my iPad when they're speaking. You can't hear them through these speakers. Madam Clerk, why don't you try to call the roll with them and we'll just try and muscle through this? So if you could please call Counselor Click Bruce and Counsel Perez.
Counselor Click Bruce?
Okay, that was a present.
Present, Counselor Perez.
Okay, she also says present. Can you recognize the counselors, seat number one and three?
Counselor Curran? Present, Counsel Davila?
Present.
Present, Counsel Govan?
Present.
Present.
And Counsel Brown, please.
Oh, Counsel Brown.
Present.
Present.
Okay, councilors and our guests, please rise for a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Madam Clerk, Counsel Perez is participating remotely on a pre-scheduled trip to Florida, so we're going to take item number five, please, out of order for her, so she can get back to her business at hand.
Item five is amending Chapter 275 of the revised ordinance of the City of Springfield, as amended by adding a new Article Four thereto titled prohibiting the manufacture, sale, disposition of synthetically derived cannabinoids and synthetically derived cannabinoid products.
Okay, Counsel Perez.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
One second, Counsel Perez, if you can just hold for one second. There are, there are five items on the agenda, not six. And Counsel Perez, I can hear you through my iPad only. I don't know if other councilors, can you hear Counsel Perez at all? From your. Can try to put my microphone to the speaker here.
Can you hear me?
Okay, try that, Counsel Click.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. President. I'm respectfully requesting amending Chapter 275 of the revised ordinance of the City of Springfield by adding a new Article Five titled prohibiting the manufacture, sale, and disposition of synthetically derived cannabinoids and synthetically, that word always, derived cannabinoid products. The purpose of this ordinance is to protect the health, welfare, and safety of the public in the City of Springfield by prohibiting the manufacturing, sale, and distribution of the derived cannabinoids and synthetically derived cannabinoid products. Therefore, I will have and delegate Health and Human Services, Helen Colton, to take the floor, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Counsel Perez, and I'm very appreciative of your support. This is an amendment that will make it illegal for Delta Eight and Delta Ten additives to be added to hemp-derived cannabinoids. And so many of you have seen the pictures, I passed out the presentation. These are really dangerous and they're illegal. I think the thing that's most important is that they're illegal and that they are impacting our youth in a way that really is not safe. What that means is that I call them gateway drugs, which means potentially our youth could get these drugs or these synthetically derived cannabinoids and seek another type of high. And so that's what I mean when I say gateway. But this gas station weed, as it's called, is something that needs to come off of the shelves of our convenience stores, bodegas. And so we are asking that you take the second step to protect the health of our children again. I thank Counselor Perez, as well as Counselor Brown, as well as Counselor Click Bruce, who took the time to meet with us and really pore through this in a way that helped us to make decisions. I'd also like to thank Mayor Sarno. The Public Health Council passed the regulation back in March. We've been working on this since probably November of 2024. We passed the regulation in March, we took it to the mayor and to the councilors. And what they said to us is, we want to put some teeth on this. We believe there should be a finding structure. And so that is how we came to the city council. I can go through the fact that cannabis, cannabis has two areas. One is marijuana, the other one is hemp. Hemp is not regulated currently because the, it is regulated under the Farm Aid Bill. So we are asking you to take second step on this. I'm happy to answer any questions that the counselor may have. And again, Counsel Perez, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other councilors? Any other councilors?
I'll be brief. I just want to thank my colleague Counsel Perez. I also want to thank the Commissioner Colton for her work. This is something that is targeting our youth. A lot of this stuff isn't regulated and also, as far as the ingredients, they're not on there. For instance, you could find a candy bar with these products and the ingredient says pure magic. So they're not labeling what these things are. So not even just our youth, they're, they're colorful, they're right in the candy aisle. Not even just our youth. Even our seniors might pick one up, read the ingredients, which they don't have any, and they could be harmed. So I commend my colleague and I commend the mayor and Commissioner Colton. This is very a dangerous subject. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Brown. Counsel Edwards?
Mine is a question either for Commissioner Colton or perhaps the Attorney Bonacani in either one. But the question is, is, does this ordinance apply to the actual sale of these particular stores that may be selling actual cannabis itself?
No, if you're talking about the marijuana facilities that we license that are legal facilities, they are really highly regulated. When you go in, you have to show your ID, you have to be over the age of twenty-one. And so it does not impact the legal cannabis, cannabis facilities that we currently license.
I apologize, that wasn't my intent in my question. My question was, I'm supportive of the legislations to be in proposed, but I'm asking is, is that some of these gas stations could possibly be selling actual cannabis, not synthetic? So does this ordinance allow for the police or the regulatory authority to find them for, if they go in? We know that if passage of this, I understand if we pass this, so if they find the synthetic, they would be fined and it would be confiscated. If you go in and if you find that the actual product is cannabis itself, would this also apply? And if not, I'd like to amend it so that it would include if you, whoever the regulatory authority that would go into the place, if they find cannabis, that the fine would also be addressed at. So, Mr. Attorney Bonacani, could you address that particular part?
I, through the, good evening to the entire council, through the president to the council. If I understood the question, question is, what will happen if people are selling cannabis THC products?
Yes.
If you are, if you are unlicensed and you're selling THC, and I will tell you that one of the things that caught our attention was there was a store specifically not licensed through the state that put a sign out in their front door saying THC products inside. That is illegal and that is a criminal violation. And then that should be handled by the Springfield Police Department. And those owners should be arrested and charged with the illegal sale of cannabis products without a license. This is dealing with unregulated products, products that nobody has even contemplated. When the, when the state passed the cannabis law several years ago, no one knew that you could synthesize certain compounds inside cannabis, mostly hemp-like products, that you could supercharge them to give a, a high. And so the goal here is very similar to what we did with flavored tobacco several years ago in the Commonwealth. And that is just directly ban them. So that if you have a menthol cigarette, it's automatically considered an illegal product and can be seized right off the shelves. And you can charge this, the owner or the operator of the business, you can fine that owner and operator. That's what we're doing here is that per se, the product itself would be illegal. And right now, what is mortifying to anybody when you hear it at first blush and then you think about it, is that being unregulated, these are packaged specifically to, to target young children. There's no, no, no description of what contained in the compounds of it. And anybody can walk into the store, a four-year-old could walk into the store and hand money across the counter and that person, the, the teller would do nothing illegal by selling that child the product. That's what we're facing and that's why we think we need to immediately take them off the shelves.
So I, I just want to, to your point, the, I think Counsel Bonacani, I'm sorry, city solicitor has explained it, but these stores that have the illegal products are not legal entities to sell cannabinoids. So, for example, each one of our legal entities pays $2,000 a year to the Department of Health and Human Services for their license. And so they are legal. What we're targeting is the illegal market. The Massachusetts Department of Agriculture Resources, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission do not have legislation in place to control these illegal products. And so that's why the city is stepping in and we will be the first city in Massachusetts to pass an ordinance, should this pass this evening, that regulates the illegal. I know, I keep saying illegal because they are illegal products.
Thank you, and I guess I have just one more question, which, and obviously I intend to support this a hundred percent. And I applaud all the work and my colleagues and, and of course Helen Colton and her staff and Attorney Bonacani. The fine, as I understand it, is supposed to be $300 per item. If the intent of fines is supposed to be punitive and they're easy enough, like a speeding ticket, to be avoided by just not selling the product, why wouldn't we not make the fine, say for example, $1,000 per item as opposed to 300?
Counsel Bonacani, you want to answer that? I'm sorry, I got you as a counselor. City Solicitor, do you want to answer that?
I'm going to answer in two parts. One is, by state law, whenever somebody is cited on a civil infraction, and that's what this would be, the maximum penalty is $300 per offense. And so we, if we could charge more, we would. And so again, back to the tobacco language, the state passed that that said that if you violate it the first time, it's $1,000, the second time it's $2,000, the third time, I believe it's five or 3,000, I forget. But there's an incremental, we don't have the ability to bootstrap ourselves to a state law right now. I will suggest to everybody here in the chamber this evening is that we're in all likelihood probably going to have to come back with some change to this to make sure that we are fully consistent with any state law when, when, if that passes. We don't know if it will pass or when it will, but we want to get ahead of it. We don't want to wait another six months until the state takes action. We'd rather take decisive action now.
Thank you, everyone, I appreciate everybody's comments and you will have my vote in the affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Counsel Govan?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'm not sure if this is for the solicitor. So, and I'm truly in support of this because I don't want us selling synthetically derived cannabinoids that are already illegal to our children. So if these things are illegal and these stores are selling them, why are they still open?
Through the chair.
Please.
Through the president, excuse me, they're actually, they're not considered illegal. They are unregulated, meaning that there is no law on the books that touches them.
Okay.
They are less touched by regulation than Doritos.
Really? That's ridiculous. Okay.
You have to describe in a Dorito and any other type of product.
With this, you don't have to.
The USDA requires you to put what, what in fact is the composition of the product. It is regulated by the USDA. This is completely unregulated, meaning that you could cook this in a basement and sell it.
So that's kind of like meth, right? When people are out there making methamphetamine and selling it, this is kind of like the same thing.
It is, it's a, it's a synthetic derivation of a, of a natural compound that somebody is making up on their own.
Right, okay, all right, well, thank you, and I'm certainly in support of this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Govan. Counsel Brown?
Just, just to briefly, so my colleagues understand that most of these products, you're not going to be won. So if you were to get, they usually come in packages. So say you found a package, they might be like fifteen, twenty of them in the package. So say they had twenty, you know, where they had like the lifesavers with twenty, that would be six, like $6,000 fine because it would be fined each. You won't just find one where the person will just get hit with 300. That'll never happen. It'll always, you know, because they come in packaging, so it'll be each individual one. So it'll be a hefty fine, if I'm correct.
And Mr. Pres, Mr. President, if they could hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Counsel Perez.
Yeah, one of the conditions when we met was that we're going to start educating and letting them know if this ordinance passes tonight, the bodegas and the, and the businesses that they're selling, what will be the repercussion if this ordinance passes tonight? I think that's important for the councilors to hear as well, because that was one of my concerns, educating them, what's the consequence, rather than just passing the ordinance. And so they are aware of, of the ordinance. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to my colleagues.
Thank you, Counsel Perez. Counsel Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a clarifying question to the solicitor. So Solicitor, if we pass this illegal licensed cannabis entity, if they choose, they could sell these products themselves, correct?
A legally licensed facility?
Yeah.
Would, would not be able to sell this product. The only products they can sell are regulated by the Commonwealth, so they cannot sell these since they're unregulated.
So in essence, we outlawing the, the sale of cannabinoids in the city, pretty much? Okay, all right, thank you for the clarifying question. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Legal cannabis entities are selling Delta Nine. It's a different derivative, so, and they would never go and try to sell cannabinoids, which are Delta Eight and Delta Ten, but it's a good question. Thank you, Counsel Davila.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Clerk, will you please recognize Counsel in seat number ten?
Counsel Santinello?
Okay, present. Any other councilors on the cannabinoid ordinance for second step, final passage? Mr. Solicitor?
If I may, Mr. President, one, one other thing I did want to make the council aware of. To underst, we want to be sensitive to businesses that, if they're doing this and they don't understand what they're doing, as much as we're skeptical of that. Helen, I'm going to speak on behalf of you, if you don't mind. The Commissioner's office is going to send out notices to all the licensed businesses in the city that are operating, what, either a bodega or a convenience store, the like, that, that we are aware of, to notify them of this pending change so that they are well aware of it. So we don't want anybody still being in the dark about not knowing what the, what the new change in the law is going to be. And before we start doing aggressive enforcement, we want to make sure that everybody's received notice of that. And the Commissioner and her office is going to be sending that out shortly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Solicitor. Any other councilors? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on second and final step to be ordained.
On second and final, Counsel Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield absent, Counsel Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient, ordinance passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Perez.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up, Madam Clerk, items one and two, please.
Item one is EverSource Gas, 295 Worthington Street, and item two is EverSource Gas, Locust Street.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of these petitions? I don't see anybody. So I would entertain a motion to continue these to July 14th.
Motion so made.
Motion made by Counsel Edwards, signed by Counsel Govan. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
And the motion to continue, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield absent, Counsel Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez? Absent, Counsel Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient, items one and two are continued to July 14th. Item number three, Madam Clerk?
Item three is a budget transfer across departments in the amount of $130,000.
Ms. Buono?
Good evening. We were, there was an error made last week when we transferred money to cover raises and signing bonuses, et cetera, for departments. So we transferred $75,000 into dispatch, but that was for their overtime. They actually need another $130,000 to cover the salaries, increased holiday pay, and the one-time signing bonus. So I'm requesting that you transfer $130,000 from salary saves in police to dispatch. And again, it was an error on our part and I apologize.
Questions from the council? Counsel Davila?
Good afternoon, Kathy, did you say one-time stipend bonus?
There was one-time signing bonus of $1,500.
Yes.
For the, a lot of the unions received the one-time signing bonus.
That wasn't the contract, right? All right, thank you, Kathy.
Any other councilors? Counsel Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. So Kathy, would we have seen this on a finance committee a month ago or something?
You didn't see it because we didn't present it. It was an error by our department that we didn't transfer enough. We only transferred them for the overtime. So it was an error on our part. Most departments had salary savings and they did have some, their actual cost for all of the, these union settlements, the deficit, the holiday line and overtime came to $297,000. But because they had salary savings, I only am asking you to transfer in total 205. So there were some salary savings. It was just an error on our part. You wouldn't have seen that, so.
Is it 2024 budget or 20?
Twenty-five, it's the 25 that's closing right now, yes.
It's actually happening right now, so.
Yeah, that we're going to close in a few days.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Allen. Any other councilors? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On approval of the transfer, Counsel Curran? Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield absent, Counsel Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez, away, Counsel Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient, transfer is approved. Final item, item number four?
Item four is a budget transfer across departments in the amount of $75,000.
Ms. Buono?
This, I come every year and I came last year. UMass bills for the school department, City of Springfield, for Medicaid reimbursement, so it's an estimate every year. And actually, when we have to come up with more money, that's good because they received more than we thought they would. But we actually have to pay them 2.5%. So when we pay on behalf of the school department, so I'm asking you to transfer funds from the reserve contingencies and 21,000 from OMB's budget to $75,000 that we have to pay to UMass for the Medicaid reimbursement billing they do for us. And again, we come every year with this.
Okay, questions from the council? Counsel Allen?
Could you just explain, I, I know this, I've heard this in the past, but could you just explain what they do for us?
UMass bills and get, works and does the billing for the school department for the Medicaid reimbursements for the school department.
Okay.
And then we pay them 2.5% of all reimbursements, reimbursements they get.
And even though it's for the school department, does it come out of our city budget?
Well, because the city budget gets the revenue.
City budget gets the revenue.
So we take, whatever revenue, we take 2.5% of that and pay UMass.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other councilors? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On approval of the transfer, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen? Yes, Counsel Govan? Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield absent, Counsel Delgado? Away, Counsel Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez? Away, Counsel Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient, order is approved. Any more business, Madam Clerk?
There's not.
Okay, council is in recess until July 14th. Everybody have a nice start to summer.
Mr. President, I think we should thank the city clerk for it.
Yes, we very much like to thank the city clerk for the updated swag. And there's. Counsel Edwards? Counsel Edwards?